The special call meeting of the Madison County Board of Commissioners will be held in Madison County Complex Building right here in nineteen eighty-one Hollywood Drive. Commissioners Conference Area, Jackson, Tennessee, three eight three oh five, Monday, November the twenty-third, two thousand twenty, at the time is exactly eight thirty, with Commissioners giving the option to meet electronically. And I'll, let's go ahead and have the caller, let's have a dedication place, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have our own Commissioner Harold Petty, who's gonna lead us in our prayer pledge this morning.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the privilege of being able to assemble here today and represent our county and our area, and Father, we just thank you for that privilege, we thank you for the wisdom that you grant us and that we make sound decisions and that would be for the betterment of the community. Father God, we're just loving, we praise you, we thank you for all things, we with the today each family here that's represented, and just lead God and direct our lives, in Jesus' name and opera, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we go on, I need a motion to make a termination of the records of meeting electronically in whole or in part as necessary to protect public health, safety, welfare, and life of the coronavirus, so we will do this.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So a motion second, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, now we're legal. We need a roll call. We need a roll call.
I need unmute, um, Miss Sarah, I just.
I'm unmuted, just make sure you think loudly.
Alexander. Y'all hear anything? Arnold. Beckham, Eric, Bradley.
Here.
To Mike, sir.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush.
Here.
Lee, here, Compton.
Here.
Dinkin.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Gobble.
Here.
Hale.
Here.
Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Here.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Spearman.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
I've heard twenty, here, Mr. Chairman, ninety, twenty. Twenty present, five absent. We're basically meeting agents for one purpose, let me read this before we might have a motion, the purpose of this.
You need to also make a motion to suspend the rules because you're calling this meeting.
I'm going to after I read this, okay. The purpose of, the purpose of meeting here today is to ensure that the effective employees realize this raise of their paycheck for the pay period ending December eleventh, two thousand twenty. This was intended of the original motion for the pay raise, which was approved after two amendments made and effective December the eleventh, two thousand twenty. This motion does not change the approved pay raise, it only changes the date the raise is going to effect from December the eleventh, two thousand twenty to November the twenty-second, two thousand twenty. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. Roll call. Roll call. Alexander. Arnold. He's there.
He's here.
They got a vote. We're about to suspend the rules, quick, Mr. Chairman. Beckham.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Brown Claudel. Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Dinkin.
Yeah.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale.
Yes.
Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Spearman. Stevenson.
Here.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
I heard nineteen yes, Mr. Chairman.
Nineteen yeses, one pass, suspend the rule. Anybody understand the motion? I need a motion. Commissioner Davidson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to make November twenty-second, two thousand twenty, the effective date for the three percent pay raise previously approved on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, for all and part-time Madison County employees, excluding employees who received a seven percent pay raise as a result of the sheriff's lawsuit, and also excluding all elected officials and school employees.
Second. Have a motion second, any discussion? Roll call. Alexander. Arnold.
Yes.
Yes. Beckham.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush.
Yes.
Lee. Compton.
Pass.
Dinkin.
Yes.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale.
Yes.
Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Spearman. Stevenson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
I've heard nineteen yes, one pass, five absent.
Nineteen yeses, one pass, five absent, motion passes. Out of number three. Motion to approve the recommendation for the Finance Management Committee to employ an architect to study the feasibility of renovating a portion of the Finance Department's building to serve as the permanent meeting room for the County Commission and the appropriation of five thousand for the architect fee. So moved. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, by my back, any discussion, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Chairman, after reading over this motion, and it seems like the biggest factor is looking for a permanent meeting room for the County Commission, I'd like to make a motion to amend this motion to include feasibility of renovating the whole Madison Academic structure on Allen Avenue. And my reason for that is that when we look at the money that we spent in renovating the West Denmark area for the, for the Sheriff Department and the Training Center, we spent over a million dollars in that renovation. And when we look at the possibility of a permanent structure, I think for the sake of the citizens of Madison County, we need to look at something that has historical significance, we need to look at something that has parking, we need to look at the fact that that structure is more centrally located. And for that reason, I think it would be in the county's best interest, if possible, if we could renovate that Madison Academic building, it would give us a lot more options than renovating this. So I'd like to make a motion that we amend that to include the feasibility of the Madison Academic.
Now, you're talking about the old, the, the Madison, Bill against his stance now, the old Jackson High Building.
Yes.
Well, the school system, at this present time, controls that building, we don't control.
Well, I think just like anything else, we have the option of negotiating with the school system and of being able, since we are the funding body for the school system, I don't think it would be out of our reach to be able to a part of it.
Commissioner Brown.
I second your motion.
That's, this, this to amend the motion, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir, this is relative to the most, to the original proposal, because nobody wants to speak more to. I think whatever is done, needs to be done, two-thirds of the county government is on the extreme, there's another sentence for taxpayers. It violates any intent of open government assessability for the public and, and to make this a county seat, which it didn't, I think is not being visionary, and at least duplicate the effort of the departments, such as the Health Department, such as the School Board. It, we have been without a home all of this time, and I think that the movement should be something that will allow for space for us to meet, we don't have training spaces, there'll be quite a few counties, people talk about sheriff of county, but they're prepared for war, if they're fighting or not, I'd like to see something centrally located too, near the the school that he's speaking of, courthouse or whatever, because everything, everything is either extremely west, from this, from my house, I could be, from the Sheriff Department, I could almost be in Baywood County before I could get there personally. So we need to think beyond this building, that's, that could be wasted money, we're not accomplishing future needs and assessment for the public.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Oh, for just y'all's information, and I think most of you know it, I mean, at least what we're looking at is right here. Taking these walls out, going to the back of the building, at least the measurements we've gotten are close to what City Hall has as far as where the council is. And Mark measured this and at least just putting pencils paper and looking at it. We can accommodate the commissioners, and the main thing is for y'all to be able to try to see each other. As well as see the people in the audience, and we think that we can accommodate fifty-five or sixty people in addition to the commission in this space. And the reason to get it, to get somebody to look at it is that we need to know, will it function the way it needs functioning, and it can be a permanent holding. One point as far as Madison, I don't know that, but I'm pretty sure Commissioner Madison was owned by the city of Jackson. I'm pretty certain when it was Jackson High Street.
I get you, sir.
That was a city school, the school system has used some of it as long as they want it, but when they give it up, it goes back to the city, not the county.
Any other discussions? We're voting on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is what the mayor said, I think we need to be centrally located, whether it's in Jackson City, old city, old Jackson Junior High School, or in Jackson High School, or, we need to be so centrally located downtown, whether it be at CKS, CJJ, courthouse, or whatever, you know, we, I think the government simply should be located in that area down there, rather than be out here. And that way the government is, the County Commission will send the government buildings to play, you know, rather than down here. See, see, need to be centrally located down there.
That everything, we're voting on the amendment, roll call. Alexander.
Excuse me, could you read that again?
Read again.
The amendment.
Motion to approve the recommendation for the Finance Management Committee to employ an architect to study the feasibility of renovating a portion of the Finance Department's building to serve as a permanent meeting room for the County Commission meeting at the appropriation of five thousand for the architect's fee.
Okay, what, what's the motion then?
Oh, the amendment, culture amendment again.
My amendment is simply to include a feasibility of renovating the whole Madison Academic campus on Allen Avenue to see if that structure would meet the requirements and the needs of the County Commission for a permanent meeting place.
With consideration that the city still has control of that building and the school is about to release it yet, so that would be, we're voting on something that we would not know whether we could even get access to tonight.
Mr. Governor, are you sure that that school is still owned by the city?
Yes. Yes.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it is, because after consolidation, the city retained ownership, county retained ownership of the buildings we own, they all went to the school system as far as the control level, they reverted back to each individual, original owner once they gave up use of, now that's my understanding of the situation.
Mr. Chairman, when we talk about feasibility, that should include all of these aspects, you know, if it's not feasible for the County Commission to get that property, then that, that deals any, any plan that we might have for renovating, but if the feasibility is steady, you're looking at all of these options, and, and that would just be one aspect of whether the county would be able to secure that structure before we look at renovating.
The bond. Any other comments? Roll call. Alexander. Arnold.
And it's building, and it's building.
That's a no. That's a no. All right. Beckham.
Oh.
Bradley.
I pass.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush.
No.
Lee, no. Compton.
No.
Dinkin.
Oh.
Ellison.
Here.
Gobble.
No.
Hale.
No.
Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Yes.
Pearson.
Here.
Petty.
No.
Spearman. Stevenson.
Um.
Taylor.
No.
Wall.
No.
Can I change the vote? Six yeses, twelve no's, one passed. Amendment failed. Now we're voting on the original amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
We're still voting. Actually, the voter, you can speak.
Excuse me, we voted on the amendment, we're not voting on that.
We're voting.
We're not voting on the amendment.
Make a decision, we finished the vote, then you can speak.
I'm glad you did, you're very, you know, sending.
Just so actually, Mr. Brown, to be recognized. Anyway, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I'd like to amend the amendment, I mean, the original motion, before we go on it, that the architect would be selected to appear to look into the future building of a central meeting place, central and massive, accessible to the citizens. Second motion, please.
And let's restate the motion, because I don't like anybody to.
Okay. I move that an architect would be superior to look into the feasibility of constructing a permanent meeting place, more central in Madison County, accessible to citizens.
You don't, the architect, I'm not sure if you're looking.
I said, look into the future, then I want to do the same thing to you, only not do it here.
Don't understand it. If I don't stand the motion, amended motion. Roll call. We have a second.
Yes.
I have a smarter second. Alexander. Arnold. Beckham.
Oh.
Bradley.
Yes.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush.
No.
Lee, no. Compton.
No.
No.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale. Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Petty.
No.
Spearman. Stevenson.
Um.
Taylor.
No.
Wall.
No.
I didn't hear from Mr. Arnold or Mr. Hale. Mr. Arnold, how do you vote on the second amendment to the motion? Mr. Hale.
Thank you.
Eight yeses, nine no's, I guess we're going to vote here. That's amendment, amendment failed. Now we're voting on the original motion. Roll call. Alexander. Arnold.
Yes.
Beckham. Bradley.
No.
Brown Claudel.
No.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Yes.
Ellison.
Oh.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale. Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
No.
Mercer.
No.
Montague.
No.
Pearson.
No.
Petty.
Yes.
Spearman. Stevenson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Aaron. Joey and Arnold.
Joe had Arnold voted, and Joey.
Seven yeses, seven no's, I guess we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, I may speak to the commission. When seven members of the Financial Management Committee make a recommendation, regardless as to how, how good that recommendation is, when you have a caucus and you bring before the full body of the County Commission, and opinion, and everybody, I mean, a lot of people come in with cold man, that you're not willing to discuss these things, we run into situations like that. Now, I'm not saying that this recommendation is, is not something that, that could happen, or should happen, or would happen, but when the entire commission is not able to address a matter with an open man before, during the County Commission, I think it's wrong, and I think we need to, above us, to, to a meeting, and then bring, bring ideas to the, to the meeting based on, based on, I mean, from the committee, not from the caucus opinion.
Well, the purpose of this was not, was it getting started, a feasible bill has been start somewhere, that's why we wanted to start here, it was the most appropriate place, we already own, that was a choice the Finance Committee made. And so, if that would be, that feasible bill was made, then we would look elsewhere, other things could be more adaptable, but we just gotta get through here first, Commissioner Martin.
Yes, sir. Well, we, basically, all we, as, 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 while you look at, right here, look at more than just one place that gets in that same thing. That basically, while we're the same, just look here, but also look downtown, instead of just looking at one place. Look more than one place, at, you know, same time.
Commissioner Beckham.
The vote was to not go ahead, but let's, let's be clear, the motion was to do feasibility, I think we're gonna automatically plan this location, it was to see, can we do it at this location, we may not be able to, right, we may spend the five thousand and go, hey, there's not enough room. We can't treat this small, or whatever, and then we keep going, and even if they said, yes, we can do it here, we still have many steps before we have to go. It's gonna take me a while, again, this is the starting point, right now, we're even, we're further from the central where we, where we're meeting most of the time, either on the work parkway or at the accident, I mean, this is, I, I don't understand why we couldn't get a vote to, to at least move it forward and see what's gonna happen.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pierce, we're really focused, basically, that when something comes forward, it should not be known, it should be open option. This, like, there were a lot of things, it's kind of whether fire is the recommendation, not the problem.
Commissioner Beckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just like to add, this, this would probably be a real inexpensive, most feasible way to use a building that we already have, and just to look at the possibilities of doing something like Commissioner Beckham said, and we can get something worked out here really cheap, then that's what we need to do, we need to try to conserve the money. Not to say that, yes, we don't need something at some point in time, to have our own meeting place, and have it in central, located, or whatever, but right now is not the time to do that, and I think we just, this would be a really expensive thing to do, and, and to use the space to the maximum of it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I know, it's what I was saying, but it, you know, this commission needs to come together, it needs to work together. You know, it, it, it's really bad, when you go down the line, and all the white folk hold on one thing, and then the black folk, uh, something different. We need to get together and work together on this mission, we here to serve Madison County, not individuals, uh, for data, uh, individuals, uh, priors, or whatever, this, you know, we have to do what's best for the county itself. No matter who come up with the ideas, you know, if it's a good idea, go benefit the county, then we need everybody to support. Or, uh, some of them, you know, it, 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 it's the way that we've been doing business in this county, and when we've been going to this county's mission, we all elected a figure. Elected by the people of Madison County, do the best job that we can, for the tax, taxpayer, the discount, and we ain't been doing that. And it proves that this is more than gradually, we need to come together, we need, you know, and, and the leaders, I think, I mean, Charlie, you know, we, we need to come back and talk, and we need to look here, we gonna do what's best for the county, move what's right for them, move this kind of, all the rest of the people to go, this is twenty-first century, we here doing, you know, white going right down, and blacks going right back, we get nothing to come. And that ain't happening, that's not good for the county, it's not right, and we didn't do something. And that ain't, and that's not good for the county, it's not right, and, uh, we didn't do what I'm saying. That, now I got one other question. And this, you, uh, Mr. Chairman, has the county had a vote in the state of Tennessee been certified yet?
I'm sorry? I didn't understand the question.
The election that has been certified yet.
Are you talking about the county election?
I'm talking about, yeah, for the state of Tennessee, county, uh, what is state, I mean, you know, has it been certified yet?
I don't think that it has.
All counties have been certified.
I, I don't think that it has, the reason I don't think that it hasn't, because I don't think Madison County has done theirs yet. Mine, I hadn't looked at it, I'm sorry, I didn't know, or I would've looked at it for this meeting, but my recollection is that the election commission for the county is meeting tomorrow. And so since some counties are outstanding, I'm going to assume the state.
Okay, when I got it, if you want to say the county, you have to. We not have that yet. That we, on the last meeting, we appointed this man here to be on this county commission, he was been certified. Both take access in this meeting, we let it go on, there's like, ain't nothing going on, you don't have to say a word. Then, and then, uh, I mean, uh, try. I'm certified, he gonna be have to be voted on again in this committee, you know? I mean, huh? I mean, sworn in, I'm sorry, what's sworn in, that's one interview. Uh, if he, you know, if he has been, uh, cert, if the election has not been certified in Madison County, state of Tennessee, whatever, you know, this man ain't got no, you know, committee. And he gotta be sent here voting.
Just to clarify.
Sure he should.
Why?
Because he was appointed.
How can he be appointed?
We voted.
Now, we had elected, he appointed, but voting election be a different thing. If he, well, he ran. You can't appoint him to the last day, everything is certified.
To clarify. A vacancy occurred when Mr. Spang passed.
Right, I understand that.
Yes. And at any time between the time, Mr., so the vacancy occurred at that moment. Anytime between the time the vacancy occurred and an ele, a person was elected and sworn in, someone could be appointed by law.
Right.
Because the law says, uh, a person shall be appointed within one hundred and twenty days of the vacancy. So, what happened last month was you all pursuant to your rules appointed Mr. Cleve. He submitted a resume pursuant to your rules. Uh, the vacancy was advertised in the newspaper pursuant to your rules, and then he was appointed by the body at the meeting last month. He's presently serving pursuant to his appointment, which was made last month. Once the election is certified, which I presume, as I said, will be this week or, or in any event before your next meeting, at your next meeting, you will have been certified, the election winner, and then he will no longer be serving as an appointment, he would begin serving as the elected person. That's why, once he's elected, he would be sworn in again as the election winner.
Mr. Chairman, why would we wait? Until now, for this man, and how could, how could we appoint him when, uh, when Mr. Uh, Mr. Spang retired? We have, that's when he should have been appointed. We should have waited, now this man ran in an election. He ran. That, no, that takes away the appointment. You know?
Not legally. No, sir, not legally.
And, 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 and he should be, he should be, uh, uh, sworn in after everything been certified in Madison County. He ain't got no bid served on it, he ain't. And both don't, everybody, both know what's going on.
Commissioner Stevens. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we do not spend more than ten thousand dollars to do a general feasibility study on a, on a, on a place where we could have a permanent location. The reason why we don't wanna spend, put a set number of dollars is because we don't wanna be in a situation where, like, we moved out to Denmark and we spend millions of dollars, as Commissioner Pierce put up. Let's just put a small amount, let's try to find us a place to appease to everyone. And let's do that. Now, your thing. These, these bills, they, correct. Not, not to renovate, just to. Not to renovate, just to have feasibility study for an engineer to come in and say, I, this, this might sense, this place does might sense, but not more than ten thousand dollars. And that way we'll be extra. A location, any location? Any location?
I have a second.
Thank you. The motion second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I favor that motion, that just certain that we come together, find out, that's, that the financial committee at the next meeting, they can see.
I didn't get it. You said you want to table that motion?
Yes.
Have a motion table.
I said.
Have a second. Roll call. This is a motion, a motion to table.
Was this?
That one.
One.
That's over with, we. Motion to table.
You provide a clarification, I hope, I hope you're about now. You said table, for what reason?
He tabled.
Okay, so, so, but one, one, one favor too.
Go away, financial committee.
And they would do what? We bring that. The financial committee, the, 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 what place is it? So, that is, we make the scene, no, no, we bring that.
Okay. Roll call.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, what is the motion, what's the motion?
Motion to table. Table what? The original motion was, Doug, thank you, original motion. The, the original motion was to, to do a general feasibility study, uh, not spending more than ten thousand dollars uh, on any location, on any location. To get that done.
Thanks.
Roll call. We, we're voting.
Alexander. Arnold.
Pass.
Beckham.
Oh.
Bradley.
Yes.
Brown Claudel.
Yep.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush. Clee.
No.
Compton.
No.
Pigg.
No.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale. Johnson Arthur. Barbara Johnson. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Monique.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Patty.
No.
Fairman. Stevenson. Oh. Taylor. Wall.
No.
Eight yes, seven no. Motion failed. Now we're voting on the original motion. Roll call.
Alexander.
I, I, I like the original motion, they reinstated.
They made the original motion, you know? I'd like to make a motion, uh, to do a general feasibility study, not spending more than ten thousand dollars for us to consider any location in Madison County that would be feasible for us to have a, um, county commission permanent location.
Alexander. Arnold.
Yes.
Beckham.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush. Clee.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Pigg.
Yes.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale. Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Monique.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Fairman. Stevenson. Yes. Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Anybody want to change your vote? Seventeen yes, motion passed. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, considering the fact that we're gonna have a pandemic this month, like we do now, uh, I recommend that we meet in the front, maybe some.
I can't hear you.
I recommend that we meet electronically in December, in that the pandemic, pandemic doesn't appear to be approved, there'll be a new process with all that, it, it, it's spreading at the.
Second motion.
Have a second. Two seconds. Roll call.
Alexander. Arnold.
Yes.
Beckham. Bradley.
Okay.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott. Bryant.
I don't.
Clee.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Oh. Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble. No. Hale.
No.
Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Monique.
Yes.
Pearson.
Oh.
Patty.
No.
Fairman. Stevenson. I asked. Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Nine yes, five no, four pass, motion failed. Have motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second, second.
Mr. Chairman, if you need to. The, the, uh, the vote, uh.
Oh, Kevin. Nine yes, five no, four pass. You can't get enough folks there on that. The vote.
I thought the majority.
Thirteen votes, by the way, thirteen. Add a motion second to adjourn, right? Roll call.
Alexander. Arnold.
Yes.
Beckham. Bradley.
Yes.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
No.
Brown Scott. Bryant. Bush. Clee.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Pigg.
Yes.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
Yes.
Hale.
Yes.
Johnson Arthur. Johnson Barber. Martin. Mercer. Monique.
Yes.
Pearson. Patty. Patty.
Here.
Fairman. Stevenson. Preston. Taylor.
Yes.